Calling the meeting to order at 6:02 PM. This is the Board of Directors, Raylur School Board Meeting for Monday, June 26, 2023. Welcome to all of our visitors, guests, and media. As usual, we're going to start tonight with the school board and administrative role calls. Mr. Felk, here. Mr. Burns?
Here.
Ms. Danielson?
Here.
Ms. Schultz?
Here.
Ms. Getzko?
Here.
Ms. Neat?
Here.
Mr. O'Neal?
Here.
Mr. Schuler?
Here.
Mr. Henin?
Here.
Mr. Gertan?
Here.
Ms. O'Connell?
Here.
Ms. Gronseth?
Here.
Ms. Dimmler?
Here.
Mr. View?
Here.
Mr. Samansky?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We do have public comments tonight, so Ms. Lomen, feel free to come up and address the board.
All right. I have a question for the school board, and I want to pose the question as to why the school does not have accidental medical insurance on the children. They have the volunteers covered, but not the children that are required to be at the school five days a week, seven hours a day. All other public buildings are required to have this type of insurance to cover accidents, whether it is the owner's fault or the patron's fault. Why not the school? It was stated to me that if you did have this type of insurance, then every bump, bruise, or paper cut, the school would be liable to pay for. What parent brings their child to the doctor for every bump, bruise, or paper cut? Not a sane one. My child suffered an injury at the school. It was a serious injury. It required a trip to the ER and possibly would have required medical, emergency medical surgery that night or the following day. Had he required the surgery, it would have required months and months and months of physical therapy to learn how to walk. I'm going to show you his injury now. If you have a weak stomach, I suggest you turn away and not look at the picture I'm about to show you. He fell down the stairs at the school and hit that metal strip on those stairs. You can see tendons. You could see clear back to the bone. This is not just a little bump, bruise, or paper cut. This was a serious injury, and it was caught on the videos at the school. I haven't seen the video yet, but it was caught on those videos, and he just happened to hit that metal strip just right. Now, had this been his face, his mouth, his head, my child could have suffered traumatic brain injury or something a lot worse. This is something that needs to be addressed, not just even the medical insurance side of this, but those stairs and those metal strips. Something needs to be done to prevent this from happening to another child. Also, I know for some, these medical things aren't a big issue. I'm not a two-income family. I am a single-income family. I am in the situation right now, I'm not getting child support. I haven't gotten child support for over two years. It's a struggle for me. Yes, $135 medical bill for some families isn't a big issue. You would just be like, hm, whatever, chump change. For me, that means my child doesn't get to be in a sport. That means we don't get groceries that week. That means I have to decide, do I pay my electricity? Do I pay my heat? Do we get to pay the internet that week? That's a big bill for me. That's a huge thing for me when I live paycheck to paycheck every two weeks. That's a huge cost for me. And this is something that needs to be addressed. This is something that needs to be looked at because an injury like this, the school doesn't have these, I'm assuming, all the time. I'm assuming my child is a rarity. I'm assuming this isn't something that you would face every week. I'm assuming this isn't something you face every year. So, no, it's not going to cost the school hundreds of thousands, thousands, probably even tens of thousands. This is just something you need to look at for future families because I know I'm not the only single-income family. I know I'm not the only poor family. I know I'm not the only family that this would have a huge impact. Now, had he had to have had that surgery, I don't know what I would have done. Ridgeview is not a hospital that works with you. I've had that situation before. They don't work with you. They don't, they are not willing to work with you. I've had that situation. They want their money, they want it now. They will not work with you. So, this is something that needs to be addressed, and I would like it to be looked at. I know it can't change my situation. I've already had to come up with the money. I've paid it. It's fine, whatever, I did it. But for future families, for future children, this needs to be looked at, and I would like to see it changed going forward. Not only those stairs, which I know were not an issue, it was Cody who was just klutzy, and I've been told that numerous times by the insurance lady that called me, but I do think those metal strips are an issue because if Cody had fallen down a carpeted set of stairs, that wouldn't have happened. Had he fallen down those rubber stairs that are going down to like the choir room or the gym room, you can't tell me that would have happened. It wouldn't have been the same outcome. So, something about those stairs, especially when you have, those are the main stairs going up to the PAC. Those are the main stairs going up to that gymnasium. What if that would have been an elderly person? Or what if that would have been me that tripped and fell? I would have been in physical therapy for a year at least, having to learn to walk, whether it would have been surgery or not, and I was told that by the physical therapist we had to go to to make sure he was okay. It's a huge issue. Those stairs are a huge issue, and if those stairs are ever wet, they are slippery, and there are no rugs down there when you walk in. There's nothing down there. That's an issue, and you have how many hundreds of parents and grandparents walking up and down those stairs? As that is the main entrance in and out of that high school, to get into that gymnasium and into that PAC. That is something that needs to be looked at. Like I said, I know it's too late for Cody, but for future children, for future families, like I said, that could have been a very different outcome. If that would have been his mouth, he'd have no teeth left. If that would have been the back of his head, God only knows what would have happened. I just ask that you please consider that you do something with those stairs, even if it's just a simple rug at the top and a simple rug at the bottom, or if you can somehow do something with those metal strips. Something. Consider it, look at it, see if you can change it, and then that medical insurance for those children, for those future families, that even if it's not those stairs that caused the accident, if it's something else, because that is a big issue for a lot of families that don't have either two incomes or who don't have great medical insurance, or like me, have both scenarios, don't have great medical insurance and don't have two incomes. That's a life-changing event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we will reach back out to you later as well. All right. First on the item is the discussion and action items, a motion to approve the agenda and addendums.
So moved. I'll second.
Motion made by Ms. Danielson, second by Ms. Getzko. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next up is the consent agenda, which includes the school board minutes for May 22, 2023, the personnel consent agenda, the business consent agenda, and a updated 23-24 school district calendar.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Burns, second by Ms. Schultz. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next up, item four, recognition, presentations, and showcase. Mr. Samansky, it's your show.
Thank you very much. Since Heather is not here yet, or may not be here, we are going to completely disregard the order and make some changes, but don't tell her because I know she puts a lot of time and effort into this. Thank you again for having us here. Very successful spring. It was a lot of fun. Once the weather started to cooperate, we were able to get outside and enjoy the weather. And I want to say for most of our activities, track did not have a full schedule. Baseball only lost two baseball games, so they had an 18-game season. Softball managed to get all of their games in, all 20 of their games, and extended their season quite a bit by making a trip to the state tournament, which is always very exciting. Which kind of leads us to why we're here, is to recognize some of the folks that participated at the state meet. But first, I'd like to introduce the Section 5 AA Coach of the Year for softball is voted on by the coaches in the section, Bethany Loether.
Okay. Awesome. Well, thank you guys for having us here to honor the players who have worked so hard this season to be able to have a successful season. As you said, spring is always a crazy time of year, and what that looks like with games and schedules is chaotic, and one of those ways this year, with chaoticness, we had 13 games in two weeks, as an example, to be able to fit in an entire full season and then be able to extend that again into middle of June to complete our season. So, we do have players here with us today. I'm really, really proud of every single one, some that are here and some couldn't make it because they're actually out on the softball field right now and still playing. So, they are definitely dedicated to their craft and to their team, and so we're going to recognize all of them, both those that are here today and those who aren't. At the very beginning of the year, one of the things that we had talked about was making this trip to state, and one of the things that I had said in that process was, let's do it not for the trophies or the medals, but let's do it because of the type of people that you're going to become in the process. And that's why we do our sports and our athletics, is to develop kids into wonderful, functioning, awesome adults, and I am really, really proud of the people that these kids have become in the process of becoming a state team. So, with that being said, I will announce, I'll announce everybody, and those who are here can come on up to the front to be recognized as well. Do you want me to do coaches, too? So, coaches that aren't here as well, but Coach Kinsey Stifter, Coach Grace Carlin, and Coach Emily Cheetah. Our players, we have Paige Kozmatka, Callie Jackson, Jada Kozmatka, Peyton Hexel, Eleanor Rundell, she's here, McKenna Bysick, Ella Getzko, Miranda Stifter, Amanda Derner, Haley Sinan, Abby Otterness, Natalie Borzma, Alea Leitner, Bella Hilgers, Izzy Neatton, Julia Otto as our manager, and Julia Otto as our manager. Thank you.
Will you be sure to send that picture to Mrs. Hune? Thank you.
One other little comment about softball. I forget, what time did we, what time was our first game at? No, 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 at state, my fault.
Oh, it's time of the day?
Yeah. So, we played at 11 o'clock. Very tough game, very close game, lot of fun, very exciting, and we had a lot of time to kill in between, and one of the things that I did is, aside from visiting all the concession vendors and all that sort of stuff, which is always fun, found a nice spot in the shade and just kind of watched softball, read a book and that, and I ended up being at the softball, not softball tent, but the tent where the officials were. So, that's where the officials can come and go and kind of sit when they're not umping and that sort of stuff. And there was a group of them sitting out there, excuse me, and one of the gentlemen that was sitting out there umped our first game, and I just happened to overhear him how nice the Watertown Mayor girls were, how respectful our coaches were, and just went on and on and on. I don't think he was doing that for me. I don't think he recognized me or knew I was even there, but it was really neat to hear that perception of our team. So, that's, again, that's credit to our coaches, that's a credit to the girls. They did an outstanding job at state, so that was a lot of fun. All right, moving on. We had a state qualifier in track, Mallory Suzano, and she is not able to be here tonight. She is on the basketball circuit. She ended up an 11th place finish in the shot put, so we'd like to recognize Mallory. And now, our last spring recognition.
I'm Kyle Locke. I coach boys golf, and I'm here to recognize Luke Moss for the third time in a row. This year at state, Luke did a little bit better than he has in the past. He placed ninth overall out of 88 golfers, and he's had a fantastic three years, and I just want to wish him the best of luck next year as he continues his career at Winona State University. So, to Luke.
Did we want to let everyone go before? Did we want to let everyone go?
Is Bethany leaving?
They're already leaving.
It's probably a good thing.
Bye, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you again for that. We just really appreciate it. I know the attendance doesn't reflect how much it's appreciated. Like I said, these kids are very, very busy between work, between playing softball, between playing basketball, and all that type of stuff. They're just, they're very, very active and very, very busy. And I don't think moving it to another night would have worked because we'd be busy, too. So, they're just, they're just busy and active, so we're very thankful that they are. To wrap up my portion of the board meeting tonight is just our program year in review, and I thought we'd do something a little bit different. You guys are gracious enough to listen, and you're involved, and you know the success that the Royals have had. involved, and you know the success that the Royals have had, as far as this team finishing this and this team finishing that. So what I wanted to do tonight is just kind of go over some things, as far as what I look at as our yearly goals and how I track them, and just some of the things that we take a look at, to kind of touch on the overall success of all of our programs. We've got five yearly activities goals that we really try to strive for, and we keep those out, and we monitor them, and they're kind of out there for the coaches to see, and we can kind of get an idea just how we are doing towards those. But one of the things that's very important to me is high participation rates. So that's our first goal there. We were down 14 total. Now, one thing about this, these are duplicated numbers. So if you played more than one sport, you're counted more than once in there. So it's not unduplicated numbers. We were down 14 total from last year, as far as the overall total number of participants, which really isn't too bad. On the athletic side, we had four more than last year. On the non-athletic side, we were down 18. And that really can kind of fluctuate. Really, one of the best things is when you have a fall musical that has a lot of people in it, and a big cast. So that really helps out that number. But that's where we're at as far as the overall participation numbers. The second thing we really strive for is, we feel that we play in a very competitive conference, and it's important for us to do well in the conference. If we do well in the conference, it's going to prepare us for postseason play. And our goal is to win three conference titles per year, whether that be team or individual. We want to celebrate any conference title. And we were able to do that with a very successful winter season that we talked about before, with gymnastics, wrestling, and boys' basketball. In fact, in the winter also, our team that did not win a conference title was girls' basketball. They finished second. So it was a very successful winter that we had. We're still sitting at 98 conference titles in school history. In addition to the high participation rates and the success on the court and the field, we really want to keep kids out. And that's why it's important, some of the measuring sticks that we have is, we really want to retain 80% of the participants from your ninth grade year into your 10th grade year. So in the fall, we took a look at it. We were a little bit below what we wanted to be. Winter, we were right on. Spring, we were above what we wanted to be. So overall, we achieved that goal. So we're looking at trying to retain 80% from ninth grade to 10th grade. Next part of that is, we want to retain 60% from 10th grade to 11th grade. And that was a little bit easier for us. Fall and winter both were very strong, and even spring was still strong. It didn't hit that 80 mark, but was still very, very good. And typically, if you think about it, in a sports team, most sports teams, but not all sports teams, you have a large number of freshmen, fewer sophomores, fewer juniors, and fewer seniors. And part of that, you know, kids change their interest. Kids may decide, hey, I'm going to go off for a different sport, or I'm going to get a job, or I'm going to do something different. So there's kind of a natural attrition like that. It's really important to get them there as freshmen, and it's really important to keep them there as long as we can, and then they can make some of those choices. If my basketball coach came to me and said we had 18 seniors, that's not a good thing. If my football coach came to me and said, we've got 18 seniors, that's a good thing. So it's not an exact apples-to-apples comparison between the sports, but... Fourth goal is promote the benefits of a healthy lifestyle. And that was a goal that we listed, but we really didn't know, okay, are we meeting that goal? Are we not meeting that goal? And a lot of these are taken from the parent and athlete, or parent and participant survey. And simply put, question 17 is, was the experience a positive one? It's a yes or no question. And we were looking at gaining, attaining an 80% mark on there, and we were able to achieve that. Next one is, the participants believing that their physical well, that's all right, I'm getting dizzy. Physical well-being improved during the activity. That was a new question that we added in the spring, so that's why there's not the information for the fall and winter. So we're at 89% there. Again, we achieved that goal. Emotional well-being, again, it was a new question when we started talking about it, so we didn't have the information in the fall or the winter. And this was disappointing, in a sense that, kind of how it fits in the questions above it and below this. But Mr. Schuler, if you can scroll up just a little bit there. 68%. I forget what the question was again.
Improved during the activity.
There we go. Emotional well-being improved during the activity. So it'll be interesting to see as the years go, just kind of comparing that and compiling that data. Again, it was just off the survey, so we really didn't go much more than just the survey question. We didn't interview kids specifically or anything like that. And again, as I mentioned, it was strange with the question above it and below it, because 80% are a goal, again, for being connected to teammates, coaches, and the program. And in the spring, 88.5 said they were connected. So again, that's good news, but how does it all fit together?
I don't mean to interrupt. What were the answer options for the emotional well-being improved? Like, what were their, what were the responses?
The question, that is the question.
Yeah, the responses to that question. Like, what could they select?
I don't, it was either yes or no, or agree or disagree.
So there wasn't a range?
Right.
No, there was not a range or anything like that.
To me, I think a range would be better, because I feel like, the way the question is worded, if I think that I'm already emotionally well or sound, or whatever you want to secure, that it necessarily wouldn't improve.
Right.
So maybe, yeah, there could be better response options to that question.
Yep.
To get a better percentage or whatnot.
Nope.
Sorry, number five.
Nope, that's okay, that's okay. The other goal that we have is to create that culture of high expectations. And some of the benchmarks that we use to identify that is Team GPA. If you take a look, fall, winter, and spring, very, very strong. Our overall GPA was a 3.55. So, very, very pleased with that. Couple other questions out of the survey, as far as participants agree with team expectations, rules are clearly explained to them. 94% said they were. Participants agree with team expectations applied to all consistently. 85% were in agreement with that. So that was a good thing. Surveys are sent out just about at the end of the season, kind of right in that final week of the regular season and just before playoffs. And there's usually a week or so to complete.
Do you do this at all with, so the middle schools are funneled for high school, right? If you have bad experiences in your seventh and eighth grade, you're probably not going to go out your freshman year. Do you do anything or measure any of that, since that is your funnel going in?
Right now, we don't. You know, a couple of things, not a lot of schools do. And I'm not saying that I would be opposed to it.
Right.
A lot of coaches do a lot of surveys in addition to the surveys that I do, when they're gathering the information and that sort of stuff. So when I send them their information, they kind of compare it to what they have. They've got different questions. They're looking for different things and that sort of stuff. We don't compare the two, although the coach has access to both of them. So...
So the coach kind of does it on their own and their own?
Correct. Yep, yep. Yearly recognitions that we have, we've had the Royal Triple Crown for the last, I think, five, this is year five or year six, I'm not quite sure. We had 38 athletes participate in three sports. So that's pretty consistent. So that banner will be going up here sometime this summer. And something new that we started is, we call it the Royal High Five. And one of the things that, I don't know if we were necessarily struggling with, but a way to recognize some of the non-athletic achievements and non-athletic rigor that some of these kids face. You know, I think a lot of people understand, okay, you're a three-sport athlete. I get that, that's easy. But unless you're involved in it, you really don't understand, okay, what's all involved in super mileage? What's all involved in trap? What's all involved in this? So it's a little bit more difficult to compare, you know, the various things that they're involved in. And really, what we did is, is just took a look at the kids from last year as a sample, and we took a look at all the kids that were involved in all of the non-athletic activities. And just to kind of get an idea of what are, who are our high achievers and who are our high flyers. And a lot of them, when you get to that five, six, seven, and eight mark, those are the kids that are involved in an awful lot. Some of them are even involved in those five or six things plus a sport. So it's quite an achievement. And what we did is, we kind of came up with, we want to recognize those are in five different things. Now, they can be in as many as 17 different things. But we're looking at, okay, who can get to that five mark? So this was the first year we did it, and, you know, is kind of one of those things where the kids really didn't know why their picture is being taken. And their picture was taken, and they're going to get a banner, and it's going to go up, and hopefully, it's going to be something that we can build on in the future. Scholarship numbers for this past year, 37 high school participants received scholarships, seven middle school, for a total of $7,200 in fee waived for this year. And again, it goes back to that, you know, we try to get the word out as best we can. It's in the information that we send out, that we send out three times. It's already been sent out once, the beginning of June. It's going to get sent out here again, beginning, I think, right after July 4th, and then August 1st, with all the information. Here's how you sign up. Here's how you do all these things. And we try to hit, money's, don't let money stop you. We can work with you. We can, we can take care of these things. The coaches all know that, and the coaches all understand that. They funnel them towards me. But I think that's money well not collected. I'd rather have kids out than collect that $7,200. So, just don't tell Lisa that, because, but that was the numbers for this past year. And then, currently, right now, our co-curricular opportunities that we have to be involved in coaching, we have four openings right now. I'm starting to lose sleep over volleyball this fall, but right now, we've got our B squad and C squad openings. And then, in the winter, we are completely covered. And then, in the spring, we are looking at head baseball and seventh-grade baseball. So those are the ones that we're looking for right now. No fine arts openings, we've managed to cover those during the year. And it's only 49 more days until August 14th and the start of the fall season. So, it'll be here quick.
Way to end on a positive.
Yeah.
All positive.
Just one other question on your survey. How many, what percentage of completion do you have on those survey questions? Like, how many people do you send it out to, and how many actually respond? What's the percentage?
Gosh. I want to say it's anywhere from 50 to 75% for the nine through 12 programs. Some are a lot less than that. You know, in the girls' golf, for example, we were 100%, but there's only six. So it's, it's, so it really depends on the number of kids. And I think for the most part, it's good information, after you weed through a few of things. And, but it's a tool that's shared with the coaches, and we use it to improve.
The same survey sent to the athletes and parents, or are those two different ones?
It's the same survey.
Okay.
Moving on to the action items. Item A, the first and only read of new district policies requiring review. Mr. Schuler.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Per our legislation that occurred this spring at the legislature, regarding the ability for districts to carry NACs loan, or Narcon, as it's more commonly called, policy was created to address that, and it's called overdose medication policy. We spent quite a bit of time this spring, as we saw this coming down the pike, with our district nurse and admin team, and just understanding this a little bit more. As it came to fruition, one of the things that did change is that it allows anybody in your school buildings to administer Narcon, which was a change from the original policy that we saw coming down from the legislature. So that was a big change. So, we will have two doses at every site. So that means the CLC elementary, middle school, and high school will have it on-site, per the statute. So, this will come into play at the beginning of the school year. Matter of fact, July 1 is your deadline to approve the policy. So we didn't really get a choice on this one. This was more just handed down to us from the legislature. But again, we did review the policy, and also the form, I'll pop that up here, was created by our district nurse. And just as, again, as a record-keeping piece, so that if it had to be administered, we can document very clearly how it was administered, the dose, the time, you know, and some of the, more of the vitals of the individual who's receiving that particular dose. Again, it is a nasal administration, so that is how you administer it. And our district nurse has applied for and received a grant to receive free Narcon, and that'll be on-site, I would imagine, by the time school starts, is what we're hearing. So, every district across the state is going through the same process as we are right now.
Was there a second signature required on that, or just the nurse?
Looks like there's a line, oh, building principal, there it is.
Okay, so it just needs to...
Sometimes when it gets converted to the PDF from her form, it doesn't always copy very well.
Yeah, because I noticed, well, and it may be the case with the policy also, because under Section 3E, there's like some weird spacing.
Yes. That'll all be cleaned up before it gets put on the website.
Any other questions regarding this particular policy?
Is the second page required to be posted somewhere?
This is all on its own. This form is not required at all as part of the statute.
No, it's just our local, kind of to assist.
Is that something all staff will get, or so that they know what to look for?
We will be updating staff, yeah, at our opening staff meetings, explaining, you know, their role. I mean, obviously, you can choose not to administer. You don't have to. It's not a mandate or anything like that. So, but it is something they need to know and how to access it. Obviously, we prefer the health professionals to administer whenever possible, but we know that might not always be the case. So, and of course, we hope we never have to do it.
Move approval. Second. Motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Mr. Felton. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries. Item B, first reading of district policies requiring review.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And we're going line item by line item, right?
And I'm glad everybody's sitting down, because this is, this is all quite a bit. So Ms. Hune has done an excellent job of starting the process of kind of aligning our policies with the new legislation that occurred this spring. And I apologize, in my failure to bring some of my board notes, I had some really good summaries that I could have shared with you in terms of each one of these, but I'll spare you that. But please know that, again, each one of these is getting updated, some more than others. And I'll just do a quick walkthrough. Some of the bigger ones certainly are student discipline. Non-exclusionary procedures is a big one, is, that's being addressed in the student discipline piece. We'll talk more about that as well. You see, the corporal punishment, pro and restraint is another add-on. The pro and restraint, where you cannot have a student pressed to the ground, face down. Again, not legal. That's being addressed here as well. Another one is a big change will be, online instruction has really opened up. Districts are now given the opportunity to deliver online instruction. MDE is not regulating that. So if districts still choose to do that, that is an option, and it's, they've kind of let go of that one a little bit, which we're not interested in doing at this point in time, but just so you're aware. Graduation requirements, there are some pieces there. There are some new legislation that's come down that are requirements, especially at the high school level, that will need to accompany that policy. And I think the bigger piece, too, is probably that school meals policy, obviously with the free meals. One breakfast, one lunch next year for all students, in kindergarten through 12th grade. That policy changed pretty significantly as well. The policy committee does meet on July 10th, and we'll be having a walkthrough, and I'll be able to kind of have a little bit more clarity in my school. be able to kind of have a little bit more clarity myself in terms of some of the bigger changes here. With the policy committee, you'll get a chance to weigh in on that afternoon as well. And then we'll bring it back for July for hopefully approval of a second read as these policies will be required at the start of the school year when students arrive. So again, I think 28 policies in all that impacted us. Again, thank you to Mrs. Hewin for doing a few days' work, maybe more, of just looking at the MSBA model. Heard today, matter of fact, MSBA had six people on staff working on this literally since the legislation came down to the last couple of weeks when they actually came out with all the policy changes. So six people on staff doing this work, so it's been a lot, but we'll get through it, so.
Just a question on the graduation requirements because I know one of them is that like civic government and then the other was the personal finance. Is the personal finance different than what we're currently doing or is it the same but?
I think it can fall in line with what we're currently doing. I think we'll be safe there from what I understand.
Right, because I believe all students are required already for us to.
In our high school, yeah.
So that's not a major change.
Not in our high school, but we do that here. So yeah, thanks to our high school already for tackling that one.
I make a motion to approve first read.
Second. Motion made by Ms. Danielson, seconded by Mr. O'Connell. Any further discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item C, the 2324 parent-student handbooks. Mr. Schuler and the admin team.
Yeah, we'll ask Ms. O'Connell to come up first for the elementary handbook updates. We'll just probably highlight some of your, your changes and she can walk us through some of those, maybe more of the significant ones if he wants.
Yep, a lot of it is just updating items, so there's not a huge ton of changes in those first few pages there. Page 15 has a little bit more changes just because of that statute changing around the lunch, but making sure that we bold the part about if you're just getting a milk, that there is a cost to that. And then reworking some of our language so that families understand that filling out free and reduced lunch forms is really not just about lunch when breakfast and lunch are free, but that there's additional educational benefits tied to it that they can access that benefit them. Because a lot of terms, when we just use the terms free and reduced lunch, when it's all free, parents think, well, why did I fill that out? It's important that they still do if they qualify because it benefits them and it benefits us too. But also making it very clear that if their child gets just a milk, that they are on the hook for that cost. Down below that, kind of just updating some things that we currently have in the building. So we're not doing, oh, sorry, it's a little bit, there we go. I checked with PTO. We don't do, we don't collect the actual box tops anymore. That's an app. We haven't collected them in a physical form for a few years. And then we also don't have pop can tops. Updating a little bit of the section around the PTO, just to have it be a generic person so we don't have to change every time who the president is, but just going to their general email address. Then slight changes around changing wordage in the pickup procedures, removing the part about visitors needing to have approval of the principal 24 hours before visiting a classroom during instructional time. And then we don't currently have a student directory. I talked to a couple of people. We haven't in several years, it sounds like. So just removing that section in its entirety, it was a couple of pages worth in the handbook. And then updating the personal electronic devices to remove MP3 players and changing that to smartwatches, just so we're a little bit more with the times. I don't know the last time that a child brought an MP3 player to school.
Please change from disconnect.
Is there, is the free reduced, is that a, like the state of Minnesota calls it that?
It's actually called educational benefits application. It's not called a free and reduced lunch application. It's called educational benefits application.
So would it benefit us to, to just call it that?
We do.
Okay.
Yep. It was in the section that was just about lunches, so just making sure that we're doing a better job of educating people too, that when lunch and breakfast is free for all, that there's this form that you should fill out still, even if you're getting a free lunch and breakfast. That helps you.
Got it.
Any further questions for Ms. O'Connell?
Does it, I'm sorry, maybe it would, I don't know, benefit if we like bold-faced that if your family qualifies, your family could receive reduced rates and fees for school activity, like, or maybe call that out somehow?
It is in our newsletters that go out.
Okay.
And the district newsletter that goes out. It's in many places, but you know as well as I do, sometimes word of mouth is the best way to do it.
Sure.
So certainly it's, it's going to continue to be a challenge and we'll continue to address it.
Sure. Is that something you guys reach out to the families that you know would benefit from this? Do you guys reach out to them personally just to let them know or no?
So there's a protocol that we have at the district office where I send out individual letters or emails to families who have previously qualified.
Okay.
And let them know because it carries over 30 days until the next school year.
Okay.
And so they're given ample time beforehand to say, hey, these benefits are going to discontinue on such and such a date. We highly encourage you to apply again before the expiration, you know, please apply online.
Okay.
And with the directions.
And when we have new families enroll, we speak to them about it too and see if it's anything that they need to have the form for, that we should, we encourage them to apply to see if they're eligible.
Sure. Good. No other questions. It all looks good to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Dittler now for the, Ms. Dittler? Early childhood programs and the childcare family handbooks.
All right, so our early childhood handbook just had some minimal edits and additions to it. So contact information, we add some information, we offer preschool sampler class, some grammatical updates. We still had the primary school listed, so we changed that to the community learning center and added information about helping grow, which is our referral service for early childhood. So those were the big changes to the early childhood handbook. And then for our childcare handbook, again, just some minor changes. We did have some updated fees, changes that just really reflect market prices around us, you know, infant haul diaper fees, things like that, that are kind of what our neighboring communities are also doing. And we minimally use these fees.
Can I ask you what finder's fee is?
A finder's fee is if a child is supposed to come to us from a bus, so not a parent drop-off, but a bus coming from the elementary school and they don't show up. And if we need to start calling families, stopping all the buses, then we charge because a lot of times families will pick up at school, send, you know, send them off to somebody else's house or, you know, another activity. And we don't know where, where they are, so to ensure their safety and just, all families need to do is call our attendance line and let us know their child will not be coming. And it's the after-school program.
Thanks. I just saw that, I was like, well, I was like, oh, we found a new kid.
And an example of this is like in the winter, we'll have, if a child accidentally goes home and we want to make sure we know exactly where they are so they're not sitting outside, you know, called home, you know, and no one's home. So that's how, that helps us just ensure safety is our biggest priority.
Right.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. So is there?
I make a motion to approve the changes in our parent and student handbooks for the elementary school, early childhood program, and childcare. All second.
Motion made by Ms. Danielson, seconded by Ms. Getzko. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next up, item B, the FY '23 revised budget. Turning it over to you, Ms. Rader.
Good evening, everyone. I broke the screen of my computer, so I'll be like looking this way and this way. Sorry about that this morning. It's been a great Monday already.
You have the budget to get it, you want, right?
Well, no, it was my fault, so it will be coming from my own budget because I was dumb. Okay, so on to the revised and the 2022, '23 revised budget and the 2023, '24 preliminary budget or adopted, proposed, that's the word I need. Okay, the funds at a glance, we have five funds that we use in our district. Fund one, fund two, fund four, fund six, and fund seven, and they are listed right there. I'm going to first talk about fund one. Fund one is our largest and primary fund. It's used to account for all K-12 educational activities, which includes student transportation and capital-related activities. All financial resources are accounted in fund one unless they are specifically required to be accounted for in another fund. In our general fund, I'm going to first talk about revenue. In our revenue, we have four main sources. State, which enrollment drives that, levy, which is our tax payments, federal, which is used or is for special education and title, and also COVID for the last couple of years. And then our local, our fees that are collected from the district, activity fees, donation, interest, and such. I mentioned that our state revenue is driven by enrollment, so enrollment projections are quite important. Our adopted budget for the '22, '23 school year, I predicted the budget on an ADM of 1,517.4 ADMs. The most recent report at the state of Minnesota was.
And ADM is this number?
Oh, I'm sorry, average daily membership. So a child, if it's here for two days, we will get two days of the total 170-some days of attendance. So we do get a portion for every time a child is in our school. The most recent ADM report for last year was done on June 12th. The ADM was reported at 1,471.94. That is lower than what I predicted the budget. I am feeling pretty strong that it's going to come up through multiple, we have a lot of sends to the state until it's final in October. We do have two secretaries that did leave the district, so there's a little bit of work to do there. So I did leave the budget at 1517.4. So hopefully it comes through and we will be on target. For the '23, '24 budget, I projected enrollment at 1,480.32 or .32. That is a decrease of 37.08 ADM. We did have a very large graduating class, well, large for us, 150, and our incoming kindergarten is right now at 80. I do have it projected at 100, so hopefully by September, we do get 100. We will monitor enrollment closely and when I come back next year, hopefully we are higher than 1480 for the revised budget. I wanted to give you a little bit of history and a little bit of look into the future of what we're looking at enrollment. As you can see, the last five years, we have been declining and of course, COVID is the reason for '21. And then our projection into the future is declining. So I just wanted to let you know that. So us as a district have to keep that in mind and be mindful of that issue. The next slide, I'm going to talk about the revenue of fund one. The adopted budget, the revenues were 19.3 million, a little bit more. The revised budget is an increase of 541,000 for about 19.9 million. The increase is due to mainly the local revenue source. Interest was way up from what I projected. Donations were up and the miscellaneous from the student activity accounts, there's a lot more activity because they're getting back to normal and I didn't have, I mean, we raised that because of what, what was going on. Also, we did receive the final insurance claim for the hail claim. So that is now over. For the '23, '24 proposed revenues, I'm predicting 21.7 million. That is up 1.8 million and it's a, it's a big number, so I went through each of our four revenue sources and I'll explain. The levy revenue increased about 251,000 and that's pretty much normal. We have an inflation factor on our levy, so that's nothing out of the abnormal. State revenue did increase about 800,000. That does include the 4% increase of general ed and additional sped aid increases. And it also takes into consideration the 37 drop of ADM. So it's not quite as high as one would expect because of that drop in ADM. The federal revenue did decrease by 514,000. That's all of our COVID funds that we will not be using in '24 because they're all done. And then our local revenue increased by 1.3 million. That major cause of that is our abatement bond, the project of the middle school road. We paid for that in '23 and we're going to be getting the abatement bond proceeds in '24. So you're going to see a shift. I'm going to be talking about the middle school road improvement a lot because it's affecting our expenses and revenues over a year. Just wanted to note that if the repayment of the abatement project wasn't involved or included, our revenue would have increased by about 138,000 from the revised budget. I always like to include a breakdown, a comparison of the revised budget and then the projected budget. You'll notice the biggest swing is of the local and that's because of the abatement project. It does increase in '24, the local part, the purple part. Levy is pretty consistent. Federal does drop because of the COVID funds and then our state does drop a little bit just because it did. Any questions on fund one revenue? We'll move on to expenditures in fund one. I always like to just give a little bit of information on the UFRS coding and what it is and the state does mandate all school districts to use UFRS coding. It's a seven-digit, 17-digit number. The first set of numbers is the fund. Second set of the numbers is the organization, the site, the building site that the expense occurred at. The program, and I've listed the program that the state has determined all of the schools to use. The course is, has the most district discretion. If you want to follow some type of funding, you can use a course code. The finance, if there's a finance code, it's usually tied to MDE spending or restrictions. And then the object gets down to actually what the expense is. And there's a list there for your enjoyment. For the expenditures, the approved expenditure budget for '22, '23 was just over 20 million. The revised expenditures are increasing to 2.2. Again, the middle school road project increased those expenditures by 1.7 million and it's going to be funded by fund one until the abatement bond is settled in August or September and then it'll pay the district back. The remaining $491,000 of increases, there's a little bit of salary and benefit adjustments. There was an increase in energy costs and an increase in the student activities. Remember, revenue is up, revenues are up, expenses are going to be up. And then we did finish some LTFM projects this year, so there's some increase there. The '23, '24 school year, the proposed expenditures are 20.7 million. This is a decrease of 1.5 million. Biggest component of that is the middle school road project of 1.7. Again, it's funded, it was funded until we get refunded. Without the abatement expenses, the expenses would have decreased about 189,000. Again, just a quick breakdown on how the object codes from the revised budget to the proposed budget. There's a little increase in salary and benefits. Purchased services was. Purchased services was pretty flat. Supplies is a decrease. That is mainly driven from the COVID funds that we don't have. The equipment, that's our biggest drop, and that's the abatement project or the middle school road project. And then the other expenses, a little bit of an increase because of our property insurance. If you can remember, last year or last month, it increased about 25%. Any questions on Fund One? Okay, we're going to head to food service. Food service revenues were approved, 761,000. The revised budget is 901,000. Increase of participation. And also, I forgot to put on here, we did receive about 30,000 of supply chain relief, which came from the state and feds. So that is quite a bit of that increase. The '23, '24 proposed revenue is 896,000, a decrease of about 31,000. And that's what the supply chain revenue was for last year. And we will, well, I just heard today that there might be a fourth round of it. So we might be getting some supply chain revenue. And just FYI, that can only be used for purchasing local food and milk. So. One thing to note, as you all probably have heard, Minnesota did approve the Free School Meals Bill, which will provide free breakfast and lunch to students. So we will see, we have not received a lot of information on that. So we will see how that unfolds next year. For the food service expenditures, the budget was approved at 795,000. The revised expenditures is 932,000. It's an increase of 137. As we just, I just said that the revenues increased, so the expenditures, because we were, our participation was higher. And we did buy some equipment this year. We bought a steamer for the elementary school and some miscellaneous equipment at the high school. The '23, '24 proposed expenditures is 965,000, which is a small increase of 32,000. And that's just going off of what I think might happen next year. Okay, we'll move on to food service. No, community education. Community education fund is where all of the opportunities for all members of the communities are put. There are different fund balances to the community ed fund. There's the general community ed fund, early childhood, school readiness, adult basic ed, and non-public aid and preschool screening. Community ed revenues was, the budget was approved at 1.8 million. The revised revenue budget is coming in at about 2.1. That's an increase of 303,000. There was increased offering and childcare also. Kids Company received some stability grants from the state and the Fed, which increased the revenues. I'm being told that they're not happening next year. But that might change. You never know about the state. So the revenue budget for the '22, '23, '24 school year is 2.1, which is a decrease of about 34,000. Again, the stabilization grants are being discontinued. The expenditures, the budget was approved at about 1.9 million. The revised expenditure budget is 1.9, an increase of 58,000. Basically, increased offerings on that. The '23, '24 proposed budget is a little over 2 million, which is an increase of 61,000 from the revised. Any questions on food service and community ed? Okay, we'll move to the construction fund. The approved budget was 100,000, and that's mainly interest on the funds that we have left. The revised budget is 38,000, which is a decrease of 62,000. And that's just to align what we actually received. For '23, '24, the proposed revenue is about 8 million. This is where the abatement funds will come into for our projects regarding that abatement project. So that's about 7.8 million. And then there's interest that we'll gain on those funds. The expenditures were approved at 4.8 million. The revised expenditures is 3.5. We didn't spend all the money like I thought we were going to. It is a decrease of about 1.3. And I just aligned it to actually what we spent. The proposed expenditure budget is about 5, well, it is 5 million. That's going to hopefully close out our $25 million bond project and then probably start a little bit with our abatement projects. Because hopefully, we'll start in spring on that. Onto debt service. Currently, the district has four bonds. They're listed there with the years that they will be paid off. And we do have the anticipated abatement bond, which will be closing in early fall. And it'll be paid off or potentially paid off in 2038, in 15 years. The debt service revenues was approved at 4.6. There doesn't need to be a change. So the revised budget will stay at the 4.8. I'm sorry, I said 4.6. I meant 4.8. The proposed revenue for next year is 4.8. Again, just a little bit higher. And please remember that the debt service revenue and expenditures follows the debt service schedule that's set for our bonds. The expenditures, the budget was approved at 4.6. And the revised expenditures are 4.5. It was decreased a little bit to reflect the actual payment amounts of the bonds. In 2024, the expenditures are going to be 4.7 million. Again, follows the debt service schedule. Okay, that's all of our five funds that we have. I'm going to talk a little bit briefly on the fund balances of each fund. Just a little history about a fund balance. Every year, you have revenues and expenses. Anything above or below that will go to the, a fund balance for each fund. UFRS has established six different types of fund balances. Fund One is the only one that has an unassigned fund balance. The rest are a restricted fund balance. And the MDE has restricted revenues on certain finance codes that, funds that they give us. The next slide just shows what the restricted fund balances are that the state of Minnesota has given to us, and they list them there. We don't have fund balances in all of them. We basically only do operating capital, long-term facility maintenance, and our medical assistance. The other ones, we spend the revenue that we receive in the year that we get it. Fund Four also has fund balances. I've mentioned them before. It's just the general community ed, ECFE, school readiness, and adult basic ed. Just wanted to talk a brief moment on unassigned fund balance. Fund One is the only one that does have an unassigned fund balance. And this is the balance that's left after everything's restricted. It's important, it's important to have a healthy unassigned fund balance because of unanticipated expenses and the fluctuation in enrollment. If you run too thin and you have a problem, then you don't have any money to finance things. It also shows that the district is, the strength of the district viscerally. There is no regulation on what a district's fund balance can be. Sometimes it's percent of your current expenses. Sometimes it's so many months. Our district's fund balance is 7%, at least a minimum of 7% and not more than 20% of our expenses. The next slide just shows a history from 2015 on what our fund balance has done. It has grown quite nicely to 2021. We did dip down in '22. You will see a large dip in '23, and that's because of the abatement bond expenses one year, revenue the next. So you do see it coming back up in 2024. I am going to bore you just for a small moment, which I, I'm going to have you just go on this because it's, I think it's very important that you guys see that the fund balance does go down and then it does go up. This is just a worksheet on all of our funds. Shows where the fund balance began, where the revenues come in, the expenditures, the projected balance at the end of the year, and then the decrease or the increase of the fund balance in the last one. You can see for Fund One, we do lose 2.2 million. And our unassigned goes down to 1, I mean, goes down 1.9. And the reason is, is because of the abatement bond. Food service goes down by 31,000. Community ed is an increase of 106, nope, 185, I'm sorry, total. Construction is a decrease of 3.4, and that's because we're spending down the bond funds. I mean, the construction funds. The bond is an increase in the fund balance. And if you remember in my levy talk, we always levy for 5% of the payments. So that's showing the increase there. So we do reduce 5.1 million in all of our funds in '23. Now if I can have you open '24. Same sheet, different numbers. We do increase in Fund One by 1.1 million. So we went down, we come back up. Not to the exact same, but we are losing a little bit of fund balance, but not 2 millions worth. Food service, it's expected to go down about 95,000. Community ed has another positive year. Construction fund goes down by, goes up by 3 million because of the abatement bonds. And then fund service increases by 125,000 due to the 5% levy process. Anybody have any questions on '23 revised or the '24 budget? Not one question? Okay.
In a nutshell, we're deficit spending with the revised budget due to the middle school project and the potential abatement bonds.
Correct.
And then we're hitting it back on normal course the following year.
Correct. We are, even if we didn't have the middle school project, we would be deficit spending a little bit. And then in '24, we are deficit spending also. So we have two years where we will be going down in fund balance if we do everything like the budget says, which that's not going to happen. So, because I'm not that good. So we'll see in November when we come back with the end of '23.
I'm assuming we need separate motions, one for the FY '23 revised.
Yes.
Move approval of the FY '23 revised as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Ms. Nathan. Any further discussion on the '22, '23 revised budget? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next up would be the FY '24 preliminary budget. Also, I will make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Felts, seconded by Ms. Getzko. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next up is Item F, the Long-Term Facility Maintenance Plan. Ms. Rader, Mr. Schuler.
Hey, Mr. Chair. We are each year submitting our long-term, our 10-year, long-term facility maintenance plan to MDE. The document that you see in front of you, here it comes, is the document that Ms. Rader submits each year, kind of outlining the process that we use to get to that 10-year mark. As you can see across the top, increase that a little bit. There you go, the years moving forward up through 2033. Ms. Rader, anything specific there that you want to touch on?
Nope, these are all calculated by the state.
It's just a blowing tenure.
Yep.
Nothing specific on here. It's all just an aggregate.
Yep. You put your district in and...
Make sure you spend so much in certain areas. Or at least they...
Yeah, this is the revenue. So this is just what we're going to get in, and it's all based on formula and it's using estimated numbers.
And it's recorded by the state.
Yes, it is.
Motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Mr. Felts. Any further discussion on the LTFM maintenance plan? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Just, there was the expenditures on there, too. You looked at the revenue and their expenditures were on there. And that's the one that we have more, yeah, okay.
It doesn't give like spending $5,000 on a new pane of glass.
No.
Next up is Item G, Southwest Metro Long-Term Facility Maintenance Resolution.
Yes, we bring this back to the board for approval. Each year, we approve a long-term facility maintenance plan. Our contribution to Southwest Metro as a cooperative or an intermediate, they are unable to collect that. So they collect that from their member districts. So with that being said, pull that up. We are asking for our contribution of 127,065.
Which is 5,896. And it's based, and it's based on usage, correct?
Yeah, we're about anywhere from 2% to 6% typically on the usage side of things. So our percentage is usually pretty small, both this and the next resolution as well.
Do we know if, has our usage over year over year gone up, down, stayed relatively the same, maybe?
Pretty consistent.
Can you keep scrolling?
I'm sorry.
For long-term facility, we only pay $5,896.17.
And then is that pretty much same year over year? I mean, our usage isn't going to jump to 20%?
Nope.
Right now, it is about 4%, yeah, four and a half.
Is there a motion?
A motion. To approve?
That was the total.
Motion made by Mr. O'Neal, seconded by Ms. Schultz. Any further discussion on the Southwest Metro LTFM resolution? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item H, the Southwest Metro Safe Schools Resolution.
Yes, our contribution to the Southwest Metro Safe Schools Fund is $10,412. You can see our proportion is right around that 4.6, as we said earlier. And this is an annual resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the Southwest Metro Safe Schools Resolution.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Felts, seconded by Ms. Danielson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item I, district official with authority, Mr. Schuler.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this sounds very, almost impressive with that authority. But we do allow Mrs. Hewen to authorize users in our MDE secure websites. In lieu of me sometimes, she gets to go in and make some of those recertifications, updates, and she is that district official who gets to do that, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Heather Hewen has the Iowa.
I'll second.
Everybody was very excited about making you in charge.
Have a motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Ms. Getzko. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Hewen.
Ms. Iowa.
Ms. Iowa.
Ms. Nebraska, actually.
Item J, MSHSL Resolution.
Yes, each year, Mr. Chair, we do kind of commit to following the bylaws of the Minnesota State High School League. Requires that we watch a video this year. This is a new piece. I think if you... This is a new piece, I think if you remember in years past, we would watch the video individually on our own. This year, the State High School League is requesting that we watch it during a board meeting. So before we officially approve the resolution, I will cue this up, and you might have to bear with me on the sound.
Yeah.
Skip those ads, sorry about that.
It's all about sportsmanship, right? Coaches coach, officials officiate, our players play, and our fans cheer. That is the partnership that we're looking for, which is all around safety, it's all around sportsmanship, and it's all around having a great time in our facilities.
The Minnesota State High School League is a dynamic partnership of more than 600 schools, reaching all communities and corners of the state. Our mission is to provide educational opportunities in fine arts and athletics for all students. Everything we do is focused on supporting, growing, and improving our students' experiences through activities. As we move into a new school year, our ongoing work is focused on three main efforts. Our top priority is to promote and support safe, respectful, and inclusive environments for participation and competition. We want all of our high schools to provide activities and events that are free from discrimination, harassment, and marginalization. That's why the Minnesota State High School League recently led a collaborative effort of seven educational organizations across the state. Together We Make a Difference was designed to amplify the voices and advance the vision of our students to ensure respectful and safe schools and environments.
After attending the conference, I really hope that as a small school, we're more inclusive and we include everybody, and that everybody gets to be involved and find what they enjoy. The quote unquote was basically treating everybody with respect, the same respect you want to receive. Being kind, not like being rude to somebody because they're not from the same background as you, like ethnics, religion, be inclusive.
It's important to feel safe because within that you're able to perform the way you want to, and you're able to give the results you want to. My personal opinion, when I'm not comfortable, I'm not giving all I can.
Playing in an environment where like you feel comfortable, you feel safe, you're going to be playing at your best because you don't have to worry about other distractions.
It takes a team of dedicated adults to provide the kind of programming our students deserve. That's why we're focused on recruiting, retaining, and supporting our coaches, officials, and administrators.
As education-based activities director, there's nobody more important than a coach or advisor for our students, whether it's in the fine arts or athletics, because we know that each child is one caring adult away from changing their path of their life.
If you look at or listen to any successful person talk about how they got there, they never did it alone. There's always a mentor. And so we need those types of leaders in our schools today to help our young people understand what it means to be a strong, supportive person within the community.
I enjoy officiating for the people. The people that I work with, the camaraderie with them is the thing that makes it enjoyable. There's coaches that make it enjoyable, there are students that make it enjoyable. We're somebody to help make the game better, we're there to make the athletic contest better.
We're always looking for new officials. I think just from gaining awareness and visibility on the role of officiating and how important it is. So definitely I encourage anybody that is interested in officiating to reach out, and we have a lot of resources and a team to help out.
Sometimes the most enduring lessons our students learn happen through activities beyond the classroom. So it's our goal to focus on enhancing the education of students through a broad range of opportunities that extend the traditional curriculum.
When alumni come and talk to me, the one thing I always hear is, you know, they remember those big moments, but they also remember what led up to them. Everything that they've done to prepare and how those coaches and those experiences have helped prepare them.
These events and experiences will stay with our students for their entire life. The relationships that they build in these extracurricular arts and athletic activities, the competition, the sportsmanship that they learn, all of these things will help them be successful citizens, help them be successful employees, business owners, and just positive contributing members to society.
At the Minnesota State High School League, it's about more than membership, it's about partnership. Because when our member schools commit to common principles and expectations, we all share the responsibility to provide safe, respectful, and inclusive activities for all of our students.
To do our best for student athletes and participants, we need to be good partners to one another and collaborate with other schools and the Minnesota State High School League.
At school districts, we know our students best, we know our families and communities and caregivers best. And to partner with the State High School League is really to work collectively to make sure that everyone participating in these wonderful events has a safe, welcoming environment where they can thrive and be successful.
I'm just super excited about where we are and also where we can go and continue to have these conversations to provide great high school experiences for kids.
Nothing is more important than the well-being of our students, and participation in activities is a great way to enhance our students' overall health.
I think it's really, really important that every high school student finds something to be involved in. Finding some way to get involved in your school and in your community is so important. It not only positively benefits your mental health, but helps you improve as a person, helps you grow, helps you make connections with other people.
These activities have helped shape who I am because it makes me understand the importance of being in something, and it has helped me for the future because these activities help you gain skills such as time management and communication.
Giving students these valuable opportunities is the mission for the Minnesota State High School League. And looking around the state this year, we've seen high participation numbers, packed venues, and enthusiastic support from school communities. And together, we have a bright future ahead. On behalf of the Minnesota State High School League, I want to thank everyone in all of our member schools for your continued active support. Because it's about more than membership, it's about partnership.
Oh my God. Oh, can we watch it again?
Yeah.
And then so the approval is the resolution for us to be a part of the Minnesota State High School.
Membership.
Are there any schools in Minnesota that are not members?
That's a good question for activity director. I'm not that I'm aware of. Not that I'm aware of.
Are there any schools in Minnesota that aren't a part of the Minnesota State High School League?
Shag St. Mary's is. The negative about not being part of it is, you are a member, you can't compete or scrimmage against somebody who's not a member. So if we weren't a member, there goes our schedule, there goes sections, there's, you know, we're basically out. So we'd have to increase our budget to travel all over the country to compete against them.
Or compete against Shag.
I'll make a motion to approve our membership in Minnesota Sports High School League.
I'll second. Have a motion made by Ms. Getzko, seconded by Mr. Felth. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries. That does it for the action items. Next up is the bond referendum project update. Mr. Zimer is not in attendance, so...
Yeah, Mr. Zimer was going to be here from ICS. He's at two other board meetings tonight, and I say you don't have to make it a third. You'll, we'll take, we'll see you next month. But basically his update was just a little bit more on the greenhouse project, doing some loose ends. Just to clarify, too, Mr. Zimer is taking over the project, the Watertown Mayor Project from Mr. Reer, who was with us for a few months. Mr. Reer is taking a leave of absence right now from ICS, and we hope he'll be back. But right now, Mr. Zimer, who has worked in the district, and Elisa, you can probably remind me, for a number of years through a number of projects. Matter of fact, he's may have been at one or two board meetings over the last few years here, but he'll be kind of getting us to the finish line, and he's getting up to speed as we speak with Mr. Reer in that transitional time. So he's kind of taking the lead on the greenhouse piece as we get that project going here, hopefully in July, and just doing some of the punch list items that are needed to be wrapped up. So a couple of things that we have working on right now is, we're working on our sprinkler line systems that were kind of torn out through construction of the retaining pond behind the GV baseball field, behind the varsity softball field. Right now, we can't get water to those two fields, so we have a local contractor working on getting that tied back together so we can get that area sprinkled. We do have water coming out to the varsity softball field, so he was able to do a temporary fix to get that going, but in July, we're going to need to get back water to those upper fields. Also trying to get the pump system working. We have a pump that takes from the retention pond as you drive into the district facility. To the right, there is the big retention pond that is supposed to be pulling water out of that to water the fields. When that gets to a certain level, then it kicks into the well system. So that is not operational at this time, and that's, we're working with the former contractor to come back and get that up and running. We couldn't run it in the fall because we didn't have lines that were working, obviously because of the construction, so now we've got to get that back up and running again. We have some locker room work continuing to be wrapped up. They are fixing some of the showers. We've had a rep from Sherman Williams in last week looking at a solution there, so the contractors kind of doing those updates and at no cost to the district getting that where we want it to be as far as the quality. Anything else, guys, block members? Things that we have missed?
That covers the high points.
What are the low points?
A lot of detail in the...
Nope, I think that's...
Is the greenhouse on schedule? Like, is it...
Depends on your definition of on schedule. We're still planning on...
On our schedule?
Still planning on having it ready for school to start. It's going to be close, though.
Yeah.
There's been a couple of delays, just waiting for permits and a few other things, so. The plan is to start construction here in July.
And then any floor updates for the middle school?
They're replacing carpeting as we speak. Carpeting is, yeah, we're just waiting for a date. We've been working with Mr. Girton and the custodial staff to get the contractors back in August to get the carpeting replaced in the middle school. The flooring, there are some things in the works. Matter of fact, I'm working tomorrow with Mr. Reer and Mr. Zimer and our district attorney to craft kind of our next steps with the contractor. We have, we think a pretty positive result, I can't share a lot right now, but we're moving in the right direction. So with that project, I think you would concur that we're, more initial things that we're hearing are positive from the contractor, that we're going to come to a good resolution. Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else on the projects? MTSS Year Two Review, Mr. Schuler.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll ask Mr. You to come up to the podium as well. I'll stay here, and we're going to tag team this one, I think. As you know, we're in the second year of our MTSS initiative across the district. And that'd be a good idea is to come back to the board to give a quick update. I also know Michelle Shaw is here and Ms. Holly Pfeifer from the elementary. They'll kind of give us some summary statements at the end, and thank you for coming. But just to reiterate, our Year Two goal was to strengthen our Tier Two supports in the elementary and the middle school. And again, Tier Two is that yellow area there on that triangle. Tier One is universal, meaning every student gets that instruction, but Tier Two is that targeted instruction for kids who are struggling, kids who are behind, who aren't meeting grade level benchmarks. And then Tier Three, obviously, is probably that 5% of kids that aren't succeeding in Tier Two are getting that the highest level of intense interventions that we can provide. So one of the things that we made a goal this last year was, as you remember, we took some classroom teachers and we moved them into the intervention roles at the elementary school. And again, those Tier Two teachers are providing those additional supports beyond what they get from their classroom teachers.
Yeah, so we shifted two teachers into full-time roles. We also applied for and received Reading Corps grants for two Reading Corps members, and they were here, and they actively sought out and serviced about 51 students throughout the course of the year. And then our dedicated academic intervention teachers, we dedicated an academic intervention teacher at the middle school and a behavior intervention at the middle school as well to kind of increase those supports for academics and behavior at the middle school.
And just to clarify, the academic intervention teacher at the middle school was supposed to be Mrs. Vetches. Mrs. Vetches did quite a kind gesture, and she took a science role when we were short of science teachers, she had the science licensure, so she went above and beyond. Unfortunately, she didn't get the role she was assigned to do, which we had a long-term sub for most of the year covering that space, so. Another goal that we accomplished this year was the completion of our process guide. Again, this is just a really great document that kind of guides us along the way in terms of, or step by step in each building, how we're keeping on track, what are some of the benchmarks that we're looking for, and also, again, problem-solving step model that we use to identify students who are struggling, and what do we do if they're not making great level progress and not responding to interventions? So this document is now finally complete, and we rolled that out officially at our district MTS meeting in June. Also...
Excuse me, and then we'll be continuing to roll that out to the rest, the remainder of the staff this fall, so that kind of everybody is in the know and knows what to look for, understands, we'll have some common vocabulary to discuss as well. Excuse me.
Yeah, no problem. The other part, we started our professional learning communities, PLCs as they're called in the elementary school. Grade level teachers met once per week as grade levels and departments during their prep time to discuss student growth and achievement. And Ms. O'Connell worked with those groups to set goals in terms of where they wanted to achieve after six weeks, after eight weeks, and they reported back to their building level, district, excuse me, their building level leadership teams to share out their results. So that was a positive piece. And then again, the district MTS team met to post benchmarking, fall/winter screening sessions to review the data. So we took a few hours after each benchmarking in the fall/winter and spring to review our data and set the next steps.
So as part of our professional development for training, we worked with, I'm sure you've heard this before, on training our staff K-2, 3, and special ed teachers in letters. We also had a couple of 4th grade and a couple of 5th grade staff members get trained on the signs of reading as well. And our interventionists, we trained them on the SANDI system too, which was going to be their intervention resource, gives them some tools to implement and to move our students forward.
One of the things we did as a leadership team, principals and directors, we read the book, Effective Universal Instruction, so again, that's that Tier One instruction by Kim Gibbons, and we had Kim Gibbons come in January to talk to our district staff, again, just what does great Tier One instruction look like? So as a leadership team, we took the time to read and discuss, and some really good takeaways from Effective Universal Instruction.
So our interventions at the elementary, since we spent a lot of time talking about that, I wanted to just let you know that we were, according to my count, and so there could be a lot of room for error in here, just so you're aware of that. I counted 117 students that we were able to support with our intervention team, and that did not include our Reading Corps, which we had 51 there. So, you know, that would have been about 168 students that were given intervention supports in the elementary. But that 117 kids, that was about nearly a 20% increase over what we were able to do last year, as well as we were servicing kids in a Tier Three format in a smaller ratio format as well. So some good, interesting numbers there. And then I also thought that I would just kind of show you, I pulled out all the kids that I saw that were on our intervention and just averaged their growth. So you can see Watertown Mayor there is in blue at the kindergarten, and at all five levels, they outperformed the national average rate of growth. So that's extremely encouraging for us. When you average them all together, we did better than the national... When you average them all together, we did better than the national average by nine points. Then when I pulled our kids out and compared them to the kids who didn't get support services, you can see that at second, third, and fourth grade, our kids who got supports did better. So in three out of the five grades, we did better with our intervention supports in the growth area as well. And you can see there that in kindergarten, we're very, very close to that average. So, you know, all those things, all those investments that we're making there, I think are really paying off nicely. And then those students who had, were in our intervention, they had 13.4 percentile point gain. Does that make sense? If you rank them on the national percentile, their average growth was 13.4 points, outperforming the non-program counterparts here at Watertown Mayor. So again, that's very encouraging that our supports are giving us nice results.
And looking ahead to 23, '24 school year, we've completed our new strategic plan with this commitment to learn our outcomes, and this is where that MTSS piece comes in. We will ensure systems and supports are in place to address the social, emotional, mental health, and academic needs of all students. So again, we tied it in to that, and that'll be some of our marching orders going into next year. Oh, go ahead, Joe, I'm sorry.
No, perfectly fine. For Tier One, our journey begins next year. We've gone through that science of reading training. Our staff was anxious to go from that training into practice, and so we were able to commandeer some resources for them. So we'll be using the, that's University of Florida Literacy Institute, I believe, is UFLI, their foundations. They were able to put together a very cost-effective resource, and then everything is all online for our staff as a free resource, including slides and everything, for about 30 minutes of daily instruction on phonics and phonemic awareness at the K-2 level. And then also as a resource, we're going to be implementing Vocabulary Search, which is a vocabulary builder and word recognition and comprehension type of a tool for our third and fourth grade teams. Also, we'll be talking about Aspire Training for our four through eight teams, as well as our special ed teams there. And then we'll be reviewing our Tier One best practices. What does research tell us about evidence-based instructional practices? And then we'll be working on standards and assessment alignment throughout the grades next year as we look at that Tier Three, or excuse me, Year Three, Tier One.
Nice picture of Ms. Shaw there. I apologize, Ms. Pfeifer kind of surprised me over the weekend, and I didn't get time to put her picture in here, but we get her instead, so that's even better. You didn't see that one coming, did you? No, come on up, and we just thought we'd invite two of the teachers who have been working so hard at the elementary with that intervention model that we talked about, which the board kind of supported last spring. And again, one teacher is not here, Ms. Hillman. I know she would speak the same, that's a really good experience, but I'll let you tell us more.
Sure. So first, as a credit to the district, was the investment in letters training. It has proven to be, have been a really good investment, not just for us as interventionists, but for our staff, because we see our students for a short amount of time. Granted, it's on a regular basis, but that continuity and common language among all staff now has been very powerful and really positive. So just want to speak to letters training. We're going to talk about students, just kind of bookend. I'm going to be talking about the fourth graders and Mrs. Shaw, the kindergartners. So I feel as our fourth graders are moving into the middle school, not only do they have the skills they need to decode multi-syllabic words by using their syllable type, which is something that's very, on a deeper level than we've ever taught before, and we feel that they've gained a lot of confidence. These are students who have struggled historically, and I feel like we're sending them to the middle school with some really strong tools to be able to tackle these words that really have stumped them. So we spent a lot of time on that, and we think it will pay off for those students.
And I was a kindergarten teacher before this, so when I taught kindergarten, I thought, gosh, I wish I could just steal 25 minutes, and I have a small group with these kids that I know need it. And so now I have the unique opportunity to actually do that. And I feel like maybe our kindergarten groups are the groups that might have ebbed and flowed the most because they, we caught them very early and knew kind of with our training exactly what they needed. So we had a lot of kindergartners come in and then test out, and then maybe sometimes sneak back in, but we would get them for 25 minutes and be able to do these really hands-on activities that we were taught how to do. They loved coming, and we saw, I mean, by the time we finished in the summer, we had, I mean, in the spring, we had a lot of our kindergartners at Tier One or very close to Tier One, and they didn't really show up on our exit data because they didn't really exit per se because the school year ended, but we had them right where we wanted them. And just for the middle grade, I'm curious to see, I'm so excited actually to see where they're going to end up in first grade and how that's going to show up in the numbers. Some of our middle grades, you know, first, second, third, stayed with us a little longer because they didn't have a lot of these opportunities. But like one quick story, I did have a third grader come in. This is kind of a child that this program was made for. She was on a story, and then COVID hit, and she was homeschooled for two years. And she came to me in third grade, and she didn't know her vowel sounds. She couldn't read at all. So we started her one-on-one, real intense, working on vowel sounds. She, in a minute, could read maybe four words to me. And then she just progressed and progressed, and then we got to move her up to a group of two, and then we finally got to move her up to a group of three, and she liked coming so much that she was actually in a social group, and they got rid of the social group because she liked coming to reading so much that they just made that her social group. And when I looked at her scores at the end, she went from, you know, reading three CDC nonsense words to reading 77 at-grade level words per minute. Like she told me, she goes, my family said, thanks for teaching me to read. And that's just one story. We have kids like that all the time. So it's just like, we're really lucky that we get to do this, and it's pretty awesome.
Any questions for us? Nope. You all work miracles, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you for talking to me. Much appreciated.
All righty. Moving on to the admin reports, Mr. Henning.
Good evening. You know, high school, it's so pretty busy with a lot of camps. We, it's been, you know, with basketball camps, have been going on volleyball camps. In summer school, we have about 15 kids, 12 to 15 kids participating, which is pretty critical, obviously, to get them back on track because it's credit recovery time for them. So, but again, overall, a pretty good number there. Right now, we're focused on, we have two openings. We have a special ed opening that we have had an applicant for that we were hoping to hire, but she had a better offer somewhere else. So we're sort of, we're hoping to get some more applicants there, and if not, we're looking at different alternatives, possibly, of what we could do. And then we have to hire the parochial school counselor, and that's been a struggle because it's posted as a .8 job because of some of the funding things. And right now, nobody is willing to work at a .8 level, obviously. So just working with them and looking at some different options. It's been reposted multiple times and just again, trying to find somebody for them. There's just not that many counselors, period, right now, especially with the increase that was hired last few years with COVID dollars. So, but those are the two openings. Knock on wood, hopefully there's, you know, no other ones. That's why we're a little hesitant to release any final schedules and things like that because last year, when we were about doing that, we had two or three teachers move on. So we had to change a lot of things. So we are getting close to wrapping up some things there. Just really want to talk a little bit about how, you know, the wrap of '22, '23. Each year, I give seniors an exit survey, and I think I sent that out to them three or four different times this year. We got about 60 to 70% return rate, which actually, I take that as pretty good for kids to get that high of a rate. We asked them a lot of questions. I'm not going to go through every one right now, but it is just, it was really interesting to see the responses because it was a pretty good reflection of kind of the senior class because about 55% of them are going to go on to a four-year college. And for example, in the survey, it was like 58%. So it was a really good reflection. It wasn't just skewed towards one group of kids or another. One question was asked, how satisfied are you with the education received at Watertown Mayor? 100% said satisfied or highly satisfied. So again, I was pretty pleased to see that. 94% said they felt prepared for the next step. We asked them questions like, what are your greatest memories of high school and kind of what you watch with state high school league? A lot of them tend to be around activities and athletics, which again, is reaffirming of the things we offer. But then it ranges to like some of the kids just said, just being able to do work experience made my school way more enjoyable. We asked him what were the most beneficial classes they took. We asked them what were the least beneficial classes that they've taken. We asked like in terms of how many connections they had made with adults. And again, almost, it wasn't 100%, I think it was like 94%, so they had multiple connections like with adults, same thing with other students. And then we also asked, like, what advice would you give to our staff? What advice would you give to incoming freshmen? And we summarized that. The staff will get to see most of the things. It just takes a while to summarize because you have, you know, 80 different responses. You try to group them as much as possible. But it's really, you know, helpful, I guess, you know, to me and to the staff to kind of get a feel for where we're at, and again, kind of get a measure of what we think may be having an impact. But some of the things they tell us, you know, is pretty remarkable in the sense of you don't really maybe realize the impact a class might have or, you know, a certain offering, you know, or a certain activity until they come out and just say like, this is, you know, a really big deal, or they tell a story about, you know, this teacher did this for me, and it really made my high school experience a really good one. It reaffirms to us that sometimes it's not the magical things we think that you have to create to make an impact. Sometimes it's just the smallest things in the world that we probably just think weren't that big of a deal, but they do make an impact on kids. So it'll be summarized, and I'll probably share more detailed results, but just to give you an idea. And then just lastly, probably wrapping up '22, '23 was graduation night was a huge success. Obviously, the weather was perfect, which really helped, obviously, but we had a lot of people there, obviously, as you saw. But I mean, just the amount of feedback that I got that night and just for the weeks after, that people were really appreciative. I just want to publicly thank so many people who helped. I mean, our custodians went above and beyond. Those poor guys had to deal with a lot of what-ifs and changes and new ideas. And Jim was there Thursday morning before with his wife and helping us set up the stage. You know, again, just all the admin support, the supervisors, the staff, you know, I think that Thursday morning, excuse me, the morning of practice, we had to set up a bunch of chairs that we got from Buffalo. And I just asked teachers, I said, you know, would you be willing to come out and just help us set up chairs? I didn't know for sure if we'd get many people. I think we ended up having like 28 high school teachers come out there to help. It took us like three minutes, you know, I didn't know for sure. And again, just that whole night because it was, it took a lot. We practiced on the mics a lot, and just real quickly, it's funny with the kids, the you could tell there was a definite delay when you would speak and then come from the speakers, and the kids were just, good thing we practiced because they were really freaking out about that. But again, we had teachers going out there in our tech department a lot, so I know I had a lot of juniors ask me, so are we doing this next year? I mean, I don't think we'll have a choice in the future. But it was really a good night, and I think it was just a great way to end the year. It was a terrific year in so many ways, but I think that was just a really positive way to end it. I know, like I said, a lot of compliments, and a lot of people have never seen our facilities. Just said, man, this is remarkable. So just wanted to thank everybody who put a lot of time and work into it because it was really a great night. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Middle school, we had a really smooth end of the school year as well. I probably can't top Mr. Henning's story. We weren't really allowed on the field that last week. They were pretty territorial. But long story short, we had a great end of the school year. I think our eighth grade grad party was the best it's ever been. Kids had a great time. We had really nice weather that last week. Several field trips and outings, and again, the weather cooperated. Everybody had a great time. We had our end-of-the-year assembly celebration, and it was just great to highlight all the different accomplishments. We have so many middle school kids. We've just built really good capacity in our staff to give students responsibility for co-leading, and that just continues to grow. And that's just been my ongoing message is, let's find out what our capacity in our kids is. So we were able to capitalize on announcing some of those things, and that was very, very fun. Our kids selected a teacher to highlight. It was Mr. McDonald, and so he was, I think, very surprised. But kids have gotten to the point now where they're just really participating in our PBIS model and promoting positivity in our building. So just a great way to finish things strong. Summer work, there is a lot going on. We kicked off summer school last week. We have about 32, 33 kids in the middle school attending, and we have two teachers that are running summer school focusing on giving kids a boost in reading and math, and that is, again, going very smoothly as we go into Week Two. Staffing updates, we are making progress, just like the high school. We are looking for one more teacher, and that is a special education teacher. We're also looking for three paraprofessionals to work in different areas of the building. But we are making really good progress in terms of the teacher hirings, and Ms. Vetches will be back as an interventionist this year to help us really continue leading MTSS. So so far, things are going very smoothly. Master schedule, we typically have our year-round secretary work on that. We have to weigh that a little bit. Mrs. Hart stepped down from her role, and I will be learning how to do that alongside our new secretary, Kathy Helgett, who begins tomorrow. So thank you, Heather, for kind of helping us out the last couple of weeks. You know, she has been doing a lot of directing of traffic for middle school families and so forth, and it's been very helpful. But tomorrow, we will have a new secretary starting. We're very excited about that. Over the summer, a lot of summer writing going on. We have just several new courses that we're really excited about. Our STEM program that I've talked about, Melinda Young has well over 100 hours of formal training she has to participate in to get the certification for those courses, and she's on her way with that. We're designing some prep courses to support students that struggle with executive functioning, and that is part of our MTSS initiative. We will have our eighth grade internship for students that are supporting students with special needs every quarter. We'll run two different periods of that, so about 25 students get to participate in being mentors for their peers and supporting inclusivity. And then we are creating a seventh and an eighth grade environmental science course. So just a lot of, a lot of progress there with some new exploratory courses, and kids really appreciate that diversity. Kind of last, but not least, leadership restructuring as a district. We sat down, looked at how do we restructure site-based leadership in our buildings? Each of us went through the process of really starting from scratch. Staff completed an application process, and we have a team of eight new people that'll be on that leadership team alongside of me, working together to really be more hands-on with supporting the initiatives that Mr. Schuler had spoken about earlier, especially MTSS. So trying to do more to build capacity in the staff so they can co-lead and support teams with accomplishing their roles and meeting our goals. Kind of the last thing connected to that, I set the stage with staff in the spring, talking just a little bit about, you know, what we did and looking forward. Our big goal will continue to be MTSS. It's a horrendous but very important framework that we have to take on. We've really made progress in terms of the PBIS, helping kids learn how to self-regulate and support students with the social, emotional pieces, kind of in that Tier One universal area. Now we have more work to do in Tier Two for kids that that isn't enough for so that they can be effective, ready-to-learn students. Next year, we will really put a large emphasis on the instructional side of things. We've sat down and looked at data, and we're just not satisfied with it. So it'll be really looking at, you know, those universal instructional practices, especially as they relate to the math and the literacy pieces. So, but moving forward, good support. I appreciate all the district's support with their interventionists that you've allowed us to add to our repertoire. So that's it. Moving along. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Dimmar? I'll skip over you, and I'll, you go next, Joe.
So we are really cranking up the community and busy right now. Summer programming is in full swing. We've completed quite a few of our summer camps, and they were a huge success this year. Our fall catalog is actually done and ready. We're just kind of hanging on to it just to get through the Fourth of July, and it will be out the week of July 10th. So we're thinking for a fall. And in, just talking about our catalog, it did win an honorable mention from the National School Communication Awards. I thought that was pretty cool. We are still looking for some staff. Our facility coordinator, we are in the interviewing process and looking for a part-time, a .5 parent at process and looking for a part-time, a .5 parent educator. So that's kind of a top priority right now. Our childcare summer programming, we have 150 and we have 127 enrolled for this school year. And in our early childhood, we've got 95 currently enrolled with a few spots open in our classes. So that's what's going on in community ed right now. Oh, and we are going to be starting the letters training, which we've got set and ready probably in August, September for our early childhood staff. I think it could be a great way to support going into kindergarten.
And just to add to that, I think that's our nice component. Glad you mentioned that of just supporting the preschool, then through the elementary, kind of see how that progression's going to play out. So thanks to Mr. View and Amy for coordinating that as well. Excited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. O'Connell, you were inadvertently left off this list.
Well, we weren't sure because it was not on there.
I know.
I was good at this stuff tonight.
I was going to try and sneak you by, but my mistake was caught.
Working it together.
No, we were in poop.
So just to recap on where we're at with our efforts of flipping the triangle. In terms of fast bridge for A reading for students in grades two through four, we decreased our students in the high-risk category from 18% in the fall to 12% in the spring. For students in grades K1 on the early reading assessment, we decreased for students in the high-risk category from 14% in the fall to 7% in the spring.
Wow.
And that's in large part to the efforts of the intervention teachers who spoke here tonight and what they've been doing. Then in terms of math, students in grades two through four who were in the high-risk category decreased from 9% in the fall to 5% in the spring. And then for K1 on the early math assessment, they went from 8% in the high-risk category in the fall to 7% in the spring. So overall, shifting those kids from the highest category of need, more towards that middle and then towards the lesser level of tier one. We received a ship grant from Carver County for just under $7,000, along with a $1,000 donation from Mayor Baseball to help us implement some Playworks into our building next year. Playworks is an organization that really prioritizes movement and providing a safe recess for students. So it will provide an inclusive, safe, fun recess for every child and make sure that every child enjoys that portion of their day. Playworks' mission is to improve the health and wellbeing of children by increasing opportunities for physical activity and safe, meaningful play. All of our staff will spend a half day participating in a Playworks training while they will learn games during workshop week. We also have a digital subscription to Keep Playing, which is a site that sends out weekly communication for new games that will be included at recess. So kids will have set games that they can learn to play. Because what we see with kids a lot of times now, but also in part because of COVID, is they don't know how to play. So they either know how to play a sport or they're reenacting like video games and violent movies, which quickly goes awry. So now we're going to fill them with all sorts of fun activities and new games and new rules that they can learn. That'll be really fun. The games can also be played in classrooms too. And then it'll be another opportunity for our fourth graders to be leaders because they're going to step up and be junior recess coaches who will go out to the younger grades' recesses and help lead games and be a mentor and kind of provide some kids to look up to and help some of those kids to build their own buckets too, especially if maybe they're kids who won't get picked for some other activities that we have. And then lastly, I don't know if you're aware of this, but there is currently a nomination going on from the Sun Patriot newspaper for the Best of Carver County 2023. Our elementary school PTO has been nominated to be one of the best in Carver County, as have some of our elementary school teachers and staff. So you can go online and nominate people through June 29th and then August 3rd through 20th. People can vote online for free up to five times a day. So if we can get anyone from our community to win some of those awards, whether it's our PTO or some individual staff, that'd be awesome because it's other PR for our district. That's free. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. View, were you going to come up?
No.
I thought about it. I thought about it.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Just real quickly, we've talked a lot about many of the things already this evening. But on the curriculum side, our English Language Arts, they will be utilizing iXL for their grammar supports and turn it in for plagiarism. I turned it in. I was also working on being able to detect AI plagiarism as well. So it's not 100%, but even if we get 50% of that, I think we'll be moving in the right direction. Our high school science team will be working with the Savis Resource in Biology and Chemistry, which aligns with the Anatomy and Physiology CIS course. On our assessment sides, we, since I didn't give a report last week, we did finish our FAST at MCA prior to the end of the school year. The MCA results, I cannot divulge to you in a summary fashion in public until August as they are embargoed. But with our FAST data, we had better than expected growth in 13 of our 18 K through 8 math and reading scores. So that was really good. As well as nine of those grade, nine of those grade scores started out higher than the national average to begin with. So again, very encouraging on that. When we include all the FAST data that Ms. O'Connell was talking about from K through 8, and we also talk about the early warning system, which we have now through infinite campus at the high school, we reduced our high-risk label from 10% in the fall down to 8.1% in the spring. And those were over 23, 2400 data points. So a nice reduction there for us. On the professional development side, we talked about ASPIRE a little bit earlier for grades four through eight. Pre-K is going to do early childhood letters for science of reading training. That ASPIRE training is going to include a science of reading overview as well as word comprehension, language comprehension, and reading and writing as well will be the modules there. And as we mentioned earlier, that's going to give us pre-K through 8 language arts that are all going to be speaking the same language and have a very good base in that. So we're really excited about that. And I think that's all I've got for you. If you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gronsa.
Hi, kitty man. So I do encourage you to go on the best of Carver County site because what Ms. O'Connell failed to mention is that she is one of the people who's been on.
Oh, congratulations. She's not even paying attention.
So anyway, so go on, put your phone in. All right. So just a few updates. As you know, it's my last school board meeting. Here we are. So just to kind of like finish some things up. So one of the other principals mentioned, I think it was Nick, who mentioned our targeted services started last week. And we also had our extended school year start last week. And so the program is four weeks. So it's last week, this week, and then not the 4th of July week, but then the following two weeks. So we have two programs going on, one at the elementary school, really for those students who during the school year require, that spend over 60% of the day in a special education classroom. So students with more significant cognitive and physical needs. So we have a program at the elementary school going on with that. And then we have a program at our middle school and high school for older students. And then we also have students who during the school year may just need, you know, some reading services or some math services, but for the most part are in their general education classrooms. And so those students who qualified for services are also being seen this summer for short periods of time, each of those days during ESY. Let's see, staffing for next year, we still have open positions for peer professionals at a couple of the buildings, at the elementary and middle school. And Nick touched on that about the middle school. And then we do have a middle school special ed teacher position open and a high school special ed teacher position open. And one of our elementary speech language pathologist positions is open. So so far, we haven't had any applicants for the speech pathologist position. So one of the things that will need to be considered for next year is more than likely going to be if we don't get an applicant looking at virtual services for that one position. For professional development, we started our, some of our staff off right after school and did that week that they were done with work on Wednesday. We had a group of about four or five people who spent all day Thursday and Friday, learning, having reading intervention trade, training with the SANDE system. That is the same system that our intervention is used. And then we're also using it in special education. So I had some staff go through the training last summer, some of them this summer. And so by now, all of our teachers who work with reading disabilities have been trained in SANDE. And so it's, it's really nice when we're looking at literacy to have an intervention system that's being used throughout our schools so that there's a clear progression of what to do and work with the students. And then of course, you have students who respond to different things. So we do also use probably four or five other reading intervention materials depending on the child's ability. So some students, the SANDE system is too high level and they need something that can focus more on their specific skills. So we have a number of systems that we use throughout the district for reading. Let's see, and then in August, there, we have staff who will be attending a training. It's called, a curriculum called LINKS. And it's a research-based curriculum for working with students with autism. LINKS is used with, for students who are more of that middle school, high school age. And so we're having teachers who will be going through that, as well as inviting some of the peer professionals to attend that. And no, Lisa, the purchase order hasn't gone through yet because they're still sending it to me. We just got finalized the dates for August 23rd and 24th. Because you're like, wow, spending more money. Yes. There we go. Let's see. And then transitioned Randy Payton. It was really nice. I was able to meet with her a couple of weeks ago. So we had quite a long meeting and we didn't get through everything. So we're meeting again the second week in July. I'll be coming over. Yep. And so we should be finishing up, just kind of transitioning and bringing her up to date on different things that are going on in the district. And just trying to get everything ready for her in the fall so that she can just kind of not have to worry about some things. So last, I'd just like to thank all of you. I've been on, I've been in the district for three years. So Darren and I started about the same time. I started just like a month or two before you did. But it's really been a pleasure to work here and really interesting time to be here during COVID. I just can't even express how different that time was. But really, I think this district is very supportive of your students. We have funds that we don't, like we don't hold back on purchasing curriculum and really working at identifying what are the needs of our students and moving forward with initiatives that are going to help them. There's been a lot of work done in the last three years in this district and it's really been exciting to see. And I think we have some really special things going on in our special education department. So anyway, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Mr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will be brief. Just real quickly, today I attended, along with Mr. View, the Resource and Training Legislative Update. And there was representatives there from Department of Education, MREA, which is the Rural School District Association, and MSBA, which you know is from the school board side, the superintendent's organization, and also C, which is Equity and Education Group. So all the lobbyists and folks, basically it was a breakdown in about a three-hour session on all the legislative pieces that are affecting schools across the state. And so I'll obviously put more in that in my Friday updates probably, but just, there's a lot and there's a lot to unpack. I think a lot of the words were, you know, give yourself grace in this first year because there's going to be a lot to navigate through. As you saw tonight, the policy changes is just the tip of the iceberg. But in one piece, just to note, this has been an ongoing topic, I think for a lot of superintendents and boards, was that unemployment piece, the summer term unemployment. Just so you know, from the district standpoint, currently we have 22 employees that have applied for the summer unemployment insurance. Again, they have applied. That doesn't mean necessarily that they've been approved. So the folks at DED, at the department, will, will be doing that approval, the denial process here. I'm sure they're getting overwhelmed. But we have folks from food service, secretarial and peer professional groups that have applied, again, 22 at this point. As you may remember, there's $135 million set aside to help reimburse districts for these costs. The goal, the problem is they don't know how far 35, 135 million is going to last. It could be two years. It could be the end of this year. And so that does not run forever. So districts are taking that into effect, long-term of what that's going to look like. You know, obviously, the other one, that's the unaccounted-for one, was the transportation one where, you know, they're not, they don't get to levy. They don't, you know, so they're building it into their costs, as we saw earlier with some of our bus costs going up next year. So I don't know how many of his employees, Cook Bus Companies have applied. But again, it's definitely changing the game. And then obviously, a lot of talk around the paid medical leave. In 2026, the first of the year, that kicks into effect. So we have a couple of years to prepare for that. And the cool thing is, there's a lot of talk around MTSS, and we've had a lot of talk today here as well, but there are possibilities getting some things reimbursed. We were kind of leading the way. I think we're kind of proud of that, that we jumped into letters trading. Now they're talking about reimbursing districts who have already done that because that's going to be a push down the road. Also, Kim Gibbons is going to be working directly with the state for the next two years on MTS initiatives across the state. We've had her here and we've been working with her for the last two years. So we're pretty excited that we're kind of in the front lines of that. And, and that was one big piece. Lastly, the READ Act is changing as well. You're probably familiar with, you know, READ WELL, work that Joe has done. You'll see that presentation soon. But now it's READ WELL by all grades. So not specifically saying READ WELL by third grade. Now they're saying it's going to be READ WELL in all grades. And really that focus on, on reading coming out of the pandemic is really still a huge focus from the state level. So a lot of information. Again, we'll be unfolding that and unpacking that as we go here, going into the new school year. Thank you.
Any questions? All right. Any board member reports? It looks like we have some negotiations on the books.
Yeah, update from the Personnel Committee. We've had several meetings with teachers. We've had one with custodians and one with food service. As you can see, the schedule listed there on upcoming. And we're in the process of scheduling the next round with custodians and food service as well. So moving along.
Anything else?
Well, for Southwest, we don't usually meet in the summertime, so probably not till August. But we actually are going to have our first little superintendent, well, our, the Southwest Metro Board is going to meet with the superintendent team. And we're going to have a little retreat on July 18th from noon to four. So it'll be kind of nice considering there are a lot of new board members on the team. So it'd be kind of nice to
Yes.
get that going.
All right. The marketing committee met last week, really looking at refocusing what our new efforts are. So the first was all branding when we first started the committee. Now it's really about how do we get more hits, so to speak, from a marketing perspective and, and looking at all the different ways that we can be, you know, continue to improve our image and, and get recognition for all the great stuff that's happening in our schools.
Marketing.
Marketing.
Marketing part.
Yes. So.
Just closing up our communication, maybe the, we're the high school, getting our, maybe some of our communication at the high school beefed up a little bit. We had a few new members to attend, which was really nice, community members. And then, as was mentioned, Policy Committee will be meeting via Google Meet to unpack a lot of policies.
Even more than what you saw.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry. I need to overrule you.
Finance Committee met prior to this meeting with Ms. Rader to kind of go over the budget so in more detail. The BAC is also meeting on a bi-weekly basis still. Hopefully, we'll push that back sooner than later.
Oh, boy.
Maybe once a month. We tried that. We went back to two weeks. Also, as a reminder, you all should have received emails from me for Mr. Schuler and doing his review. Please get that done in the next couple of days. And at the July meeting, we will have a closed session at the end of the meeting to kind of go over his performance review. So please get that done. Saying it also to myself. Saying it also to myself. I'm not leading by example on that.
It's been a very busy.
Exactly.
It's been a very busy time.
Yes. Anything else? All right. Hearing nothing. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Have a motion made by Ms. Danson, seconded by Ms. Nathan. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion's approved. Meeting is adjourned at.